To order for the Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, pre-agenda meeting for the Ireland County Board of Commissioners. And I would ask Ms. Jones if there are any adjustments to the agenda that she's aware of?
Yes, sir Chairman Mallory. We actually have two items to add under new business. One is an amended budget ordinance and the other is a report from Commissioner McNeeley.
Are commissioners aware of any additional amendments? Hearing none, is there? We will save a motion to adopt the amended agenda till seven o'clock. Appointments for the board, we will hear, we have a presentation this evening from the Ireland County, the Town of Troutman relative to their support of Ireland County Fairgrounds remaining in its current location. We also have a presentation of 2018 Ireland County Child Fertility Annual Data Report by the County Health Department's Child Fatality Prevention Team. And I would also have a presentation of the State of the County Health Report by the Health Department. We do have two public hearings. One is Economic Development and Center for Project Doughnut. I don't think Mr. Younger is here to give us a preview on that, but we've been briefed on it before. Are there any changes to that?
Okay.
They approved it last night.
Okay. And then we also have a public hearing to consider requests by David Hughes with Nest Communities to release ETJ of 8.9 acres on Brawley School Road in the town of Mooresville. So that will then take us to the administrative matters, which are the sum and substance of our pre-agenda meeting. And so if you'll go ahead and tee those up, Ms. Jones?
The first item that we have is a request from the Register of Deeds for approval of a revenue stamp refund in the amount of $1,106. And I'm not sure Mr. Wyatt is here.
I think he was planning to be here at seven o'clock, or at least I saw something.
Is this something the board would like to review now, or do you want to wait and hold this for the seven o'clock?
If you could give us a summary, then, but we'll still hold it open for the seven o'clock hours.
Okay. Actually, this is something that was a deed stamp that was prepared by an attorney. And the revenue stamp was calculated to be $1,370 and the actual purchase price paid for the property was $132,000. So when you calculate that out, what should have been collected was $264, which requires a refund of $1,106. So this is not an error in the Register of Deeds. This was a calculation error, so it requires a refund. Any refunds have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
All right. We'll just hold that matter open.
Okay. The next item is a request from Solid Waste and Mr. Lambert and Dean Lael are here to answer any questions and make this presentation, but it is approval for, to award the formerly bid contract and construct phase six of the landfill sales one and two.
Thank you. That's a pretty big mouthful there. I was hoping I wasn't going to have to read through all that. So we did, as previously, we had requested the project approval. We did take bids on it and those bids came back, and I believe we had eight qualified bids. And D.H. Griffin came in as the lowest, and that is a fairly local North Carolina company. They were found to be compliant in their bid. References checked out, the engineering firm, the project engineer, municipal engineering verified all those items. So what we'd like to do is request approval to award that project to them and then to bring the money out of our retained earnings into the project ordinance. So it's, I guess it's, it looks like it's a three-part request tonight. Request to approve the contract, then Budget Amendment 41, and then to bring that money into the capital project ordinance. And if you need to ask financial questions, I'll turn that over to Dean.
Any questions for David?
One question I kind of, is this, reading through, trying to look through the information and seeing where they gave references, but is this their first landfill they've built? Sale, sell while, whatever?
It is the first that they've built for somebody else. They might have built their own because they have owned and operated C and D landfills. But it will be their first line landfill, but they're partnering with a company to do the liner that is a local company actually that does that. So I feel pretty good about that, and they have done a lot of large municipal projects and other arenas. And they were also one of the large contractors on the debris removal from New York after nine eleven.
I mean, I've known D.H. Griffin. They're good at tearing stuff down. I just wasn't sure how they was building.
They have started the construction side of things and seem to be rapidly growing.
So the, in terms of the budget amendment, the fund has sufficient funds in it for the $8,000,030,000?
Yes, sir.
What is the balance of that fund right there?
That one I don't know.
I thought it was in here.
May take a while. This is a pretty lengthy.
So we get a $392,000 contingency?
Yes, sir. That's built in in case there's some conditions come up that we don't know about or we would want to add something like, if we need to clean out storm basins and they're there with the equipment to do it, we might request that.
So is that in the bid or on top of the bid?
That is, that is on top of, that was bid as alternate to.
That'd be an addition too.
Right.
But that's included in the appropriation?
Yes.
Yes, that's what they have. Okay. Any additional questions other than what the fund balance is? If you can get that number to me.
We can, and I can assure you that it is well sufficient. We have a financial plan that we've calculated out 15 years and we're in pretty good standing with that.
How much more, looking at the other bids, the companies that are closer to D.H. Griffin, how many of them had actually done this type of project specifically before?
Earnhardt Grading has done it for municipal engineering, never for us. I'm not sure about Garrick Brothers. Glover Construction has, Shamrock has. Source Contractors I'm not familiar with, and Thale Construction has.
So the company Earnhardt, they, out of that group, do you think Earnhardt's got the most experience doing it? They're just a little higher than D.H. Griffin?
They do, do have experience with line landfill construction.
So are you, are you more comfortable with the D.H. Griffin or Earnhardt? Or do we, we have to go with them if they're qualified, or?
The requirement is to accept the lowest responsible bidder. So in order to not accept the lowest bid, you would have to deem that that bidder is not responsible for various reasons.
Can you argue the point, if they've never done that specific project before, you're more apt, in my opinion, potentially to dip into your contingency on somebody that's never done it than you are on somebody that has done it and would know more of the hurdles, I guess, doing that type of project. I'm just saying Earnhardt's not that much different than D.H. Griffin. I'm just, I'm asking you guys, I mean, you deal with it, so.
Well.
I'm just saying, I'm asking your professional opinion, you know, the, Earnhardt's done it and they're not that much different. So is the responsible thing, is that a reason, attorney? No?
I don't think that alone is a reason that you could deem one not a responsible bidder.
Well, they're bonded.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Like, I, I mean, I, just because it's their first time doing a landfill doesn't necessarily mean that they're not qualified. Trying to look back here at those bids.
I'm sure you guys checked that out.
They were investigated, and I can tell you the last sale that we constructed was done by Triangle Grading and Paving, and that was their first landfill. And they've probably done the best job we ever had done. That's no guarantee, of course, this time we'll get the same result.
I just wanted to ask you that, because I didn't, you know, sometimes I like your guys' opinion as to the companies, and you feel good about it, not that you wouldn't recommend it if you didn't. You know, I agree with Jeff, it's, that doesn't mean they wouldn't do a good job. Maybe they'll do the best job. It's their first job.
Sometimes you're trying to break into the market, and you're going to be a little bit.
D.H. Griffin's a huge company.
They're a good company. I mean, I don't have any problem with the company. I just.
My business has worked with them before. They're, they're top-notch.
Okay. I'm good. Okay. Any further questions? Consent? Now we have three different items. We need three different, we want an omnibus on all three?
We can do that with all three. Just a clarification that it would be a consent to award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, which is D.H. Griffin Infrastructure, for a base bid of $7,848,626, plus a contingency of $392,431.30. Then it would be to adopt the accompanying Budget Amendment Number 41 for those amounts and adopt the capital project ordinance. So that would be the three things that consent would be regarding.
Just double tap that consent?
Do we say consent three times or tell me this, say ditto?
Yeah, but just one.
All right. Consent?
Consent.
All right.
Thank you.
Right.
The next item is a request from ICATS, and Brad Johnson is here to request approval for a multi-year agreement for mobile radio service and support with Mobile Communications of America.
Good evening.
How you doing Brad?
Brad. Tonight's budget amendment is for a new radio system for our vehicles. It's one of the new, it's a Motorola. It's called a TLK 100. And it's a mobile device that works off of a cellular network. And so we would have coverage throughout the United States if service ever deems that. But currently, our service does not, we cannot get service on our radios north of 40. So that's really only half of the county. And then anytime we go to Winston, we lose cell serv, or radio coverage as well. And so this is a, to be able to better the communication with our drivers, which then will make our system more efficient as well.
Not that you go up there, but did you go up by a central fire station, see if you got a?
We did. Whenever we, when we were testing the unit, we had a demo unit. And so we went up into Wilkesboro and up on Brushy Mountain and the backside and stuff like that, places where we typically do, you know, lose even just cellphone coverage. And so our radios actually had better communication with the office than just a cellphone did. And so it's a, it's a commitment of $21,000 a year. It's, that's for 35 units. It's similar to a cellphone agreement where the radios are free as long as we're buying a month-to-month contract for the service. And that's $37 per radio. And that's a better bet for us than trying to do cellphones, because federal law, you can't operate a vehicle with a commercial driver's license on the telephone. But the, the mobile radios have a headset that will allow you to operate the radios without, you know, considered being distracted driving.
So they're hands-free then?
They are. And so there's a button in the, on the vehicle on the floorboard that'll be a push-to-talk button, so they can push the button with their foot and it'll activate their, activate their mic. And it'll also will help us in our compliance with some of the HIPAA regulations, because they will have an earpiece now for the radio, so information won't be broadcasted about the vehicle. It'll go just directly to the, to the driver. And it'll also give us the, the safety benefit that the driver will wear the radio on their vest. And so if there's a situation where our driver is away from the vehicle and needs to be able to get ahold of the office or needs emergency services, something like that, they'll be able to go ahead and make that call as opposed to having to try to get back to the vehicle. Say if they were in an accident and pushing a wheelchair up a ramp or something and they get pinned, then they would have a way to contact us.
So at the end of two years, we will own the radios?
Correct. We will own the radios and then it'll just be a month-to-month service fee, you know, to continue the, the cell service.
Of how much?
Of the thirty, let's see.
For two years, the figures include the radios, but in year three, how much is it annually?
There, there actually, there's no price drop with, with us owning the radios. It's just, that's their, one of the commitments of, for you to do it.
Is there a price lock since there's no price drop?
The price would be locked in for two years or until we, you know, terminate the contract.
That's what I'm saying. The contract expires in two years. You own the radios.
Yeah, but from, from that point forward.
From that point on, what's the price?
It has it right now as the $39 still. I mean, it'll be one of the, the items where the radios will be upgraded. And as, you know, as cellphones change every two years.
If you want it upgraded.
Yeah.
I get it, you know, this, this ought to, this is a twenty more, twenty-four month term. It should be completely renegotiable as far as the amount of the service fees. I wouldn't roll this over without, because that's what they like, is just forget why you're paying, what you're paying for. So once it's paid for, there may be another carrier out there that has a better deal, so. Need to get the best deal.
Question I have, I guess, these being portable radios, if they get damaged in any way, is there any insurance in the contract, like with the cellphones? It just looks to be like a cellphone deal, but it's not a cellphone deal.
These are, these are military tough radios. They were designed for the military. So I mean, they're in a, in a very rugged and protected case. There's, there's no screen to crack or anything like that. There's only a two-button unit on it. So it's, it's, it's pretty, I guess.
Even I could use it.
During that two years, are the radios warranted and do they give you extra radios if you have a damage or loss or stolen?
Well, they, they all are GPS tracked. So that if the, if the radio's lost, as long as it, you know, has any charge in the battery, then it is trackable. And, but if the radio is damaged, then it would depend on the, you know, the state of the damage. I mean, if we, if we dropped it in water, then yeah, we're probably going to have to buy a new radio. But if it's, you know, if it was something where it just stopped working and there was no visible damage to it, then I, they would change it out.
Any additional questions?
No.
Consent?
Consent.
Consent. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
The next item is a request from Planning and Development, and Mr. Todd is here to make this request for approval of the map review officers list.
Good evening. It seems every, every now and then we come to the board for the appointment of review officers. Anytime one of the jurisdictions in the county have staffing changes to meet the statute requirements, if they've got somebody that's going to be signing off on subdivision plats, we have to update this list. So the Town of Mooresville and Troutman both had changes. So this resolution is just to recognize those staff changes with the review officer list.
Okay. Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Okay, and Mr. Todd also has the next item, which is a request for approval of appointment of representatives to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee.
A couple of weeks ago, individuals with the census reached out to us about establishing this committee. So we do need to get one appointed. There's no set number, or number of representatives. It is recommended anywhere between eight and 15 members. We do need to get the appointments made as soon as we can. They do offer some training where they'll come and sit down with the group. Essentially, it's, it's to help get the word out about the importance of filling out your census forms when you get them and kind of being champions for, again, the completion of the census.
Any questions for Todd on this one? Okay. Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Ms. Anderson had a great question. Do you want to add that to your announcement tonight for vacancies, boards and commissions, that committee? Or do you want to delegate that authority to our Planning and Development Department to make those recommendations on that committee?
What's been done in the past? Have you done that before, or do people turn in applications for it first?
In 2000, for the 2010 census, each county commissioner appointed three people to it. So if you, if you want to follow suit there, you could announce them tonight. And at the July meeting, appoint each of you, submit three names for appointment to the board. You don't have to, but that's how it was done in 2010.
Well, it's the pleasure of the board on that. Marvin?
I have a problem. Do either one. I'm good with three.
You don't have a dog in the family?
I may.
Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and do that, then? We'll just.
So add it to the announcement for vacancies?
Right.
The next item was a request from Tax Administration, and Malia Miller, Miller is here to make this request and to go over this. It's actually a denial of a taxpayer request for refund that does not meet the statutory requirements, and she can go over this with the board.
Okay. How are you doing, Malia?
I'm fine. Hope you're all doing well.
Great.
I believe in your packet, you've got a copy of a taxpayer request for refund. This request does not meet the statutory requirements of 105-381 for refund. It is not a tax imposed through clerical error, an illegal tax, or a tax levied for an illegal purpose. There was a discrepancy in the ownership, and it has been that way for years. It, it was a mistake. I think the, the ownership was misrecorded by the Register of Deeds, but from the mapping department to the assessor's office. So these properties, they're two medical office, two medical offices. They've been billed to opposite owners for years. The taxes have been assessed, reappraisal notices have been sent. Tax bills have been sent and they've been paid. So when this was brought to the attention of the mapping department, they've made the correction. We've made the correction for 2019 in the assessor's office. And the tax bills going forward will be in the correct name. The taxes that have been billed and paid are not refundable. There was an error, but it, it's not considered a clerical error. And I think part of your packet had a procedure of how we determine clerical errors and gave you a little bit of information on clerical errors and illegal tax.
So if we make a, so if there's a mistake in the, in the numbers and people pay that, unless it fits those three criteria you sent out, then there's, we can't reimburse it?
That's correct.
Can we credit future to make up for that, or that's the same as reimbursing it? So you can't do that?
This, this is a matter that, that should be resolved between the taxpayers.
One is underpaid and one is overpaid.
Yes, sir.
The, the, it's basically, one property's $265,600 and the other one's 194.9?
I believe that's right.
And it should have been the other way around?
Yes. So one has underpaid and one's overpaid.
Do we have a ballpark figure of the dollar amount we're talking about?
I don't. Really, it doesn't meet the statutory requirements, so I haven't calculated the refund.
Just curious.
And, and also, if it even met the requirements for refund, there would only be certain years in which we could, it could be refunded.
Would that be go back three years or something?
It, it could be refunded if, if it met the requirements within five years from when it was first due and payable. So I believe that'd be 2014, if, if it was done before September 1st. But it, it doesn't meet the requirements. It's unfortunate that this happened. I do think the taxpayers have had some contact with each other. And certainly, we regret any inconvenience, but, but it's not something that we, we would recommend.
So Lisa, why does this require us to deny it if we can't statutorily do it anyway?
This is a little bit of a new one for you all because of the way the statute reads as to who has the authority to approve or deny. And staff does not have the authority to deny. They only, nor to refund. So that's why it's coming before you tonight. So there's a process in the statute as far as then what their next remedy is once the governmental body has denied the refund.
So we have to deny a refund we can't statutorily pay anyway?
Right. If it met one of the three criteria.
Yeah, we could.
Then you could, and it wouldn't be denied.
That's what I mean. I mean if it.
But they, but the statutes step, spell out what criteria that taxpayer has to meet.
So our denial is based on the fact it doesn't meet those three, or fall in those three categories?
Correct.
I got you. Okay.
About 800 bucks.
Well, and.
It's about 800 bucks a year.
If.
How long has this been going on?
Since 2005, wasn't it?
The letter said 2005. I think the transfer, the deed actually showed 2008.
Eight, okay. It, every year was a tax listing returned to the tax office?
I honestly don't know if they return their listing every year. I don't know if they did. I do know they were billed every year, and I know that they received two reappraisal notices. And, and, you know, there had never been an appeal. I'm not sure how it came about this time, but.
They both have the same address except one says 102, Suite 102, but it's the same physical address.
physical address. You know, people have a responsibility to read their mail, and they have to affirmatively list their taxes every year. If they don't notice it, or if they didn't even file those, then, yeah, that sounds like something they ought to work out between themselves.
Right. And the sale was between one of the owners now and the second party, so it was just an error.
If they had been completely separate parties, you know, if you were trying to collect from somebody that had underpaid, what would your recommendation be? That, oh, we made a mistake. It's not a clerical error. Does that mean that if the shoe was on the other foot and we had not received sufficient money, that we would be able to go back and recoup that? Or what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and we would not be?
Well, we have the discovery process. You know, if something is underlisted, we could discover that property, and that would allow us to assess and levy that. But in this situation, the bills were sent out, the property was assessed, the ownership was wrong, but the bills were paid. And when the bill is paid, it doesn't really matter who pays the tax bill. Once it's paid, it was a legal tax, it was paid, and it's non-refundable.
Just a favor for their neighbor.
So basically, even if we could refund here, we got to collect here?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, any further discussion?
How would we remedy that? Is that a legislative correction to allow us to... Let's say these weren't the two parties that were still involved, and let's say you could pay them back under some category. Because, say, somebody overpaid. I mean, everything we got paid was due, the wrong party paid it. So what would be a remedy to where, if somebody overpaid, does that fall in one of those categories that's already there? Had that been the case?
If it were a clerical error and somebody had typed in an extra zero and made the structure 10,000 square feet instead of 1,000, and they overpaid on that, that would be a clerical error. It would be refundable.
So that fits in your category.
And it would be to the person that paid the taxes, to the refund.
I guess there's no way to prepare for every opportunity, I guess.
It just does seem odd to me that the way clerical error has been defined is to be able to say, well, this was a mapping error. Well, that's an error, and that could be a clerical error in terms of somebody transposed a number and just mapped it incorrectly. I mean, I think, I suppose, what is their recourse? If we deny it, can they appeal to the Superior Court and say, look, their definition of clerical error is inaccurate. It's too restrictive. It's saying, well, this department, the assessing department, didn't make the clerical error. It was the mapping department, and then we got this pointing, kind of pointing fingers within the hole. But it is the county, all right? So...
The next step is a civil suit in the process, but they have to have your denial before they can go to that next stage.
And if I may say one other thing, if it were a mapping error that was a number transposed, instead of .5, it was 5, we would consider that a clerical error if it met this criteria. If it was apparent on the face of the document it produced an unintended result, we wouldn't say, oh, that's the mapping department, because it would still be a clerical error. We're not just pushing it off to a different department. It just needs to meet the criteria of the clerical error within the tax department. And that, the North Carolina Court of Appeals had made reference to this, what they deemed to be a clerical error, because it's really not defined in the machinery act.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's helpful to think of it's an error as to what the result is in the tax, not an error as to how you got there necessarily, although that might be the case. But here, there's no error in what the tax was that was assessed. It was the correct amount of tax on the correct piece of property. It just got sent to the wrong person. And so that's, but the definition and the terminology is not its best.
Well, let me ask you this. If we were to say, well, you know, we didn't, well, from the owner, we didn't collect enough to cover one property because it was someone other than the owner that paid it. We say, you know, what if that individual paid us what he should have paid all along? Then the other person will have overpaid, and we could refund them, right?
I just don't think they meet the requirements for a refund. And again, it doesn't matter...
So we embrace the catch-22?
Well, and it doesn't matter who paid it, you know, as far as the statutes go.
Yeah. Well, you know, generally speaking, I don't particularly care for government writing rules that create insolvable problems that, you know, it just doesn't smell right, you know? But the individuals here also had some responsibility to review their annual tax listings and their tax bills. And at this late date, you know, it's been corrected, but if they feel that they can't work it out among themselves, then they do have recourse to Superior Court. So I would ask if there's consent.
Well, one thing I would like to say, which may be confusing for everybody, including ourselves, if you look down at the parcel address and where it says legal in both the... Oh, come on now. Get it back up here. They're pretty much identical. They're PT Unit 1, Lake Gate Square, I guess, and the other one is PT Unit 1, Lake Gate Square. Square spelled different is the only thing I see. They spelled square different on one versus the other, but it's pretty much the identical same address. Now, also looking in there, the only thing different it looks like is the square footage on one is a little bit bigger. But, and you look at the parcel numbers, the parcel numbers are almost identical except for the last three. Instead of 1-0-1, it's 2-0-1. So this whole thing, we always talk about this when I was on the planning board, about the names of roads being so similar and almost identical, and this is where you get into, where you have to be careful about such-and-such place and so-and-so lane, and everything's all there. So once again, so much alike in the address made it so similar to the mapping people.
I agree.
Well, and of course, at the end of the day, since the Court of Appeals has weighed in on this matter, maybe the Court of Appeals wants to address it in the future if all the parties are exercised about it. So any further comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of the May refunds and releases, and no commissioners' names are on this list.
All right. Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Finance Department, and Deb Cheek is here for approval of Budget Amendment Number 39 in the amount of $205,000 to appropriate investment earnings for the first debt payment of the vehicle financing.
Thank you. Good evening. You know, this year in the budget, we decided to do some financing for vehicles. And when we were preparing the budget last year, the proposal from our advisors was that there would only be a principal payment in this budget year. And when we actually completed the financing, there was a principal payment and an interest payment. So I need to appropriate additional investment earnings, which are currently 1.4 million over what is budgeted in the amount of 205,000, to be able to pay the principal payment on this financing.
Any questions for Ms. Cheek? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is a request from Facility Services Department, and David Salivi is here for approval of Budget Amendment Number 40 in the amount of $32,000 to transfer funds allocated in the capital improvement plan to the Facility Improvement Fund for drainage repairs.
Okay, thanks. The Government Center, the 1898 section, which you're in now, was recently, Phase 1 was recently completed, and Phase 1 consisted of major structural repairs, repairs to the copula out front, and a complete re-roofing and reguttering system. That is now complete, and we're ready to move on to Phase 2. And initially, Phase 2 was the renovation of all the remaining exterior, which would be windows, brick, repointing of brick to bring the outside of the structure up to a good standard that would serve us well into the future. We have discovered that, and we recommend that, before we go to the outside of the structure, and we waterproofed the top, and we have had, for some time, we've had a major water infiltration and inflow condition in the basement. It's been there for, well, I can't tell you because it's way before me. And it has caused, other than just the paper and the things that were stored there, that created environmental condition as far as maybe mold and moisture and those type of things. But more importantly, after having professionals look at our underneath part on the inside, it also has caused deterioration where the water has overflowed through the bricks. And the bricks are part of the foundation that's actually holding up the exterior walls. So we haven't gone past the point of no return, and we would like to divide the Project Phase 2 into two parts. And we have started, we are recommending that we start with Project 2U, which is the underground portion. And then after that, as we can, we move to Project 2A, which is the above-ground portion. We've had some estimates, and we think the design work for 2U will probably be around $32,000, because once we go outside this building and completely dig around it and waterproof it and put drainage in, we have to get water away from the building into the stormwater system. Unfortunately, on Court Street, there is no stormwater system. The street is the system, and our gutters just dump out onto the street. So there's a lot of work to be done before we come, before you, with results from RFP and bids to actually do this work. But to get started, we are requesting moving 32,000 of the total Phase 2 project into the Facilities Improvement Fund, where we can actually have a project fund and move forward with this. I think I've covered it, but I'm sure there's questions.
So does all the water that goes down the street, is it collected at the T-intersects?
It goes to Meeting Street, which has a stormwater system.
So are you going to have to, on Court Street, are you going to have to go to Meeting? Are you going to be able to pump to something else?
We don't know. We don't know yet.
Yet.
Yet. Correct. Right now, we will do exploratory work on the outside. This place was built on a hill for a reason, but unfortunately, that water doesn't leave this space because our drainage systems are well above the bottom of the foundation. So it'll be a system put in against the foundation. Foundation repairs made as needed so that we're structurally sound. Then a system put in, waterproofs it, and then they use something, what they used to call it Tera Drain, which is a corrugated-looking plastic material that goes on the outside. So water runs down the corrugation part and doesn't touch the brick. It gets into a drainage system underneath, and then from the drainage system, we get it out of here. Now, once we finish that, we will condition the basement area, I mean, really condition it, where it can be properly used for proper storage, and it's good use. And we don't have the environmental or the moisture issues that we're having now, and we won't run into this, we hope, 50 or 60 years down the road, when the next person has to stand here and do a little something.
Got to fix it.
That'll fix it.
Any additional questions?
Consent.
Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave.
The next item is a request from Administration, excuse me, for approval of a resolution authorizing the exchange of property on Bristol Drive and to authorize the county manager to request Bank of America to release this tract from the current deed of trust. This is something, and Mr. Salivi has a picture up here showing the exchange. This is something that came about with the purchase of the Public Safety property there on Bristol Drive. And what is proposed is an exchange of property. The rainbow color would be given to the county in exchange for the red color will go to the property owner, which is directly behind, which is owned by G.O. Wilson Company. And then the blue area would be an easement to G.O. Wilson for access. In exchange, we will get an easement over the red piece because that will give us access to property we own and maintain in the rear to the right.
That's what we previously talked about before.
Correct. Yes, correct.
That makes sense to me.
Consent for me.
Yeah. Any additional questions? Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Administration for approval of a utility easement at the jail construction site to the city of Statesville, and Mr. Salivi is here to present that request.
Okay, our jail project is moving on, and as we get toward the end of it, we are tying up all our loose ends with the Statesville Technical Review Committee requirements that was placed on our site when we first started several years, a couple of years ago. One of those things that Statesville required us to do was to make some improvements along Harrell Street, Stockton Street, and in this case, we're talking about Water Street. Those improvements that were required were decorative streetlights that would meet the downtown streetscape, I guess, design that they've used around. And that was part of the approval process of the Technical Review Committee, and we've done that. We're trying to get through all of these. Now, to do that, first of all, remember, this is Water Street, and there is no right-of-way on Water Street. It's from edge of pavement to edge of pavement. So we own, or it's our property from edge of pavement in toward the jail, okay? So I'm, well, it's got a little blurry, but I'm going to try to help you through it so you understand what is involved. But there's a 10-foot easement, and we put in, where these yellow marks are, we put in the four required streetlights. And we put them in what I used to call the hate strip, which is not a hate strip. Lisa can tell me the proper word. Hate strip, okay. And it's a strip of grass between the pavement and the road that everybody hates it because nobody wants to mow it. So that's where the streetlights are now. And they are put in, they're installed, and we are ready to go, and we get that box checked off on the TRC. Also, where the little red box is, which is on the other side, our side of the sidewalk, is a control box for those four lights. Well, therein, the city of Statesville needs an easement, a utility easement, for them to be able to go onto the property to maintain those lights and the control box if it's needed, or when it's needed, not if it will at some point. So this 10-foot easement, and from what I understand, we have done this on a couple other areas of the county, and I'm not sure about those. So it's not uncommon, but it's just a utility easement where they can get on there to repair the streetlights and work on the control box when needed. That's all. Any questions?
Who has to mow the grass?
The county, actually, I did find out today, and that once this jail was built, that this... that this entire area, all of this, it will be now maintained by the Sheriff's Office, because he has a different style of grass that looks really nice, and he will maintain that whole area hate-stripping off.
Must have been some of that grass he confiscated out on the interstate.
Yeah.
I didn't know it would grow down there.
I didn't even know it would grow there.
Any questions?
How mu, can, can we make them pay for that easement? That would pay for landscaping. I'm just kidding.
I don't know, and I'm, I'm not kidding, because I don't know if we can make them do that or not.
I know, I know. More, more requirements.
But anyway, it's in, it looks great, it's just another box, we're just trying to move through it, and this gives them permission to go on a property and repair.
Consent?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Salivi. Okay, the final request is a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on June the 4th, 2019.
Folks had the ability to review the minutes?
Unfortunately.
Consent?
Consent.
Consent. Didn't really see any mention of my birthday in it, but other than that, it's like...
Well, you know, one of the...
That was such a traumatic event for you, getting older.
Great days in American history.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Announcement of vacancies, one announcement for the Mooresville Planning Board, which will be made at the 7 o'clock hour, and, Beth, do you want to go ahead and summarize the appointments to Boards and Commissions, it seems like?
One clarification on announcements, we just added the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee.
Right.
Is that, as far as the announcement, do you want those individuals to submit applications, or does each individual Commissioner want to reach out to various individuals that you think would be a good representation for the county?
For them to submit applications, that's a...
Is there any past people that served on that, that may have, that we may have a list from 10, 2010, that we could reach out to first, since they have experience, if they're interested again?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good process.
Okay.
And then advertise it, you know, like the rest.
Amy, if you would, could you send us a copy of that application to our email, so we got it?
Alrighty.
Okay, as far as the appointments to the Boards and Commissions, we have several. The first is the Animal Grievance, and there are three appointments. Loy Root has volunteered to serve again, and then Justin Benfield and Jason Binge have volunteered to serve for the first time. Central on a Workforce Development Board, there's one appointment, and Brenda Spees has volunteered to serve again. Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, there is one appointment, and we have two individuals. Andrew Sherrill has volunteered to serve again, and we also had Sarah Croats that has volunteered to serve for the first time. The I Care Board of Directors, we have two appointments. Vets Smith and Melissa Wyke, and both have volunteered to serve again. The Jury Commission, we have one appointment and two individuals. Irene Blackburn has volunteered to serve again, and Gail Hobbs has volunteered to serve for the first time. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one appointment and two individuals. Jim Mixon has volunteered to serve again, and Sarah Croats has volunteered to serve for the first time. Also, as a side note, Seth Gardner has volunteered to serve as the Parks and Recreation Representative. This is not required by the position, but although the Council does prefer for the Board to approve that, it's not required, but they do, they do wish to have your approval for that. Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, there is one appointment with two individuals. Betsy Yarber and Kevin Donaldson has volunteered to serve for the first time. We did reach out to Mitchell Community College President, Dr. Tim Brewer, and he said that either individual, they would be honored to have them serve. The Planning Board, there are three appointments. Kristi Pfeifer, Mark Davis, and Robert Palms have all volunteered to serve again. Statesville Board of Adjustment, one appointment, and that is Craig Morrow, that has volunteered to serve again. Troutman Board of Adjustment, one appointment, and the Council has recommended Helen Byers to be reappointed. Troutman Planning Board, two appointments. The Council has recommended Barry General and Randy Farmer both to be reappointed, and that is all that we have.
We have four boards that have more than one.
Yes, the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, Jury Commission, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees.
The Mooresville Planning Board announcement for next meeting, is that our position on that board, or will they send us a recommendation? Mooresville, I don't remember.
That is the ETJ representative on that board, and they would make the recommendation for the Board to approve, similar to the Troutman.
But that's technically our ETJ appointment.
Correct.
To look out for the people in the ETJ.
Alrighty, well, I think that we can probably discuss individual applications offline individually, and then if there's not a consensus, we'll just continue those matters until the July term, so we have more time to explore the backgrounds, so. So, just, if you will just go through the ones that we have no, we have the correct number of applicants for positions, there's no controversies, just go through those initially, and then as, we'll take the others and either have resolved them or continue that until July.
So like the Planning Board in Statesville, you had, you said there's three appointments, you listed the three people that would volunteer to serve again, what was our decision on the applicants we've had in the past that would stay active for so long? Are those names not to be considered, or what was our position on that? I thought we were gonna leave the applicants open for a year or something.
Between...
I know we had some for the Board of Adjustment, I don't remember.
We had several for Planning Board that we didn't feel, and that was a discussion we had, that the Planning Board applicants were gonna be active and not have to, not have to apply every time for six months or a year, whatever it was. I thought that was... Yeah, you're right. I'm just saying, that was something we looked at, to look at, you know, getting people on there that had applied when there was an opening.
Well, all three that have, that have served before have asked to serve again, so I don't really know if we have a necessarily opening or not at this point in time.
It's the pleasure of the Board, I'm just, we had those positions, those people that wanted their, you know, applications to stay active, so if there's reappointments, just like they're up here where you're gonna pick, there's a reappointment if somebody desires to serve again, but you're still gonna pick.
I get them.
I think it would be appropriate to contact them, see if they want to be considered, and then if they do, then based on, you know, the best policy approach to how to fill the Boards, you know, to give greater weight to folks that are already on the Board or not, that's just up to us.
These folks have already agreed to serve, am I saying right? These three to talk about.
And we had said that if anybody of the current members chose not to serve again, that that's why we have the alternates, so they could come and fill in. So in my opinion, if, since these three are still serving and wish to serve again, the alternate should remain in the place of alternates, waiting for somebody to not serve again to fill their spot.
So having that policy then appear on the ones that have somebody willing to serve again with another applicant, then you would use the same criteria to go ahead and reappoint?
Actually, I will.
I'm just saying, that makes sense, if we're gonna have that policy, that makes sense, if somebody's there already and willing to serve again, I agree, the experience...
I think experience is critical in all these Boards.
I, I agree, that's why I asked.
I don't mean to quash people wanting to volunteer and do, but at the same time, you still have somebody wanting to volunteer that's been on a Board, and they, they know where they're at. I think, I think you, you take an, I don't wanna call him an incumbent, but you take someone that's been there before, you take somebody that hasn't.
I mean, the only position, then, that we would have a, a pick over one would be the Mitchell Board, because you don't have anybody that was there before.
There we'll have to make a choice.
There we'll have to make a choice, but the other ones using that Board standard, I guess you'd say, is, if somebody's already there willing to serve, then we just do that person.
That'll be my, that'll be my criteria, I don't know how the rest of the Board feels, but that'll be my criteria.
And I'm okay with that, that's why I asked.
Once again, that's what I've always felt like, that's a choice.
Yeah. That's why I asked, I just wanted to have a set policy or standard we were using.
All right, then, we will roll to, I don't think there's any unfinished business, anyone aware of the 7 o'clock hour? This is a public comment period meeting, and then we will have new business to do a Budget Amendment and a report from Commissioner McHale, and any kind of County Manager Report Preview?
The majority of my County Manager's report is, if you want mulch, please go get it. We are peddling mulch for free at our Twin X facility and at our Bandit Lane facility in Mooresville. It is free, and we really need to get rid of it. So, please, it's good quality mulch, so please go get you some.
Chris, headlines, free mulch.
Good quality mulch, and it is for free, so we really need to, to get rid of that, so it's a good time to refresh your flower beds and go get some mulch, it's free. We encourage everyone to really take advantage of that opportunity.
Reinforce that at the 7 o'clock hour as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and go into a closed session for Economic Development Discussion pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 Subsection A4. We are now in closed.